At this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is May 1st, 2012. We're located here at City Hall. And I would like to invite Deacon Craig McAllister with St. Francis Cabrini Catholic Church up to our podium to lead us in our invocation. If you would, please rise for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And what I did to Mike Barber one time when he came out to Hudson State Jail is I did this to him. And this is the way my tradition, my Roman Catholic tradition starts every prayer, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we've come before you this evening, asking your blessing on these men, sent here by the people of Granbury, and who have been ordained by you to govern this great city. Guide them with your wisdom, strength, courage, and may their decisions direct us to the center of your will for Granbury. I ask this in the name of your Son, the living Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
And join us in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, please. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated. At this time, I'd like to ask Robin Curry to come forward. Hi, Robin. Welcome back. Once again, I'd like to point out that this is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. And I have an official proclamation. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and give the operator the respect on the road they deserve. Now therefore, I, Ricky Pratt, Mayor of the City of Granbury, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2012 Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Granbury.
I do this every year, and I'm out there working very hard to try to get the public to realize that we know we are smaller and sometimes harder to see. Just not two weeks ago, just not even a block away, two of our bikers were hit. And the first thing we heard was, "I didn't see them." So if none of y'all remember anything that I've said tonight, please remember, look twice, save lives, save lives, look twice. What will that extra second matter if you save someone's life? Thank you.
Be safe out there, smiling. All right. I didn't receive any open-mic speaker cards, so it looks like we'll be moving on to our consent agenda. And Dee, I need to point out that Mitch Tyra is not present. I failed to do that earlier. So council members, you'll notice that in your packet, you were given a copy of the council minutes of April 17th, 2012. I'd like to draw your attention to just a couple of areas where I found a need to correct. 12-051, halfway through the paragraph, first paragraph of that, it says, "which consisted of drapery, lighting, and sound equipment, and with all of the fly rail system." Strike with all of, and just let it read, "and sound equipment and the fly rail system."
It will be total.
Yeah.
One of those things too, on that grant, on that grant fee, what did you, our scale was going to pay for?
Well, they stated they were going to help. I don't know that they were planning on coming up with all of the money because the drapes...
Do you know how much it's been committed?
At present, I believe the last point, last word I heard was, "we gave them back $9,000," and that's how much they had built up from a fund previously, and they asked for that money back. So that money was coming forward, but I know drapery is more expensive than $9,000.
It's going to be around $1,000.
Yeah. The other area that I'd like to point out was in 12-055. In the second sentence, in the bottom paragraph, on the top of the page just before, it says Manager McKethin commented, "Councilperson Parson had to come into the city." We should be adding the word "City Hall" and get permission from staff. Sure, he could do it from anywhere, but he would have to come into City Hall. Yes. And one other area that I had a question on, Dee, I need to know whether or not the vote was unanimous on the vote of that motion, because it shows that following further discussion, Mayor Pratt called for the vote on the motion. The motion carried with five ayes and zero nays. So my question for Mickey is, Mickey, did you abstain or did you vote on that issue?
Vote no.
You did? Okay. Then it reads correctly. Anybody else have any corrections that need to be addressed during those minutes? Entertain a motion to accept as amended?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Allen, need a second, please. Second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to our first deliberation item. At this time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of CSL Granbury LLC to replat 801 and 853 Kalinko Drive, being lots 1 and 2, Block A of the courtyards at Lake Granbury Addition, to lots 1R and 2R, Block A of the courtyards at Lake Granbury Addition, and consider and approve said replat. The property owner is seeking to replat lots 1 and 2, Block 1, to shift a common property line approximately 56 feet to the north. Scott, I know this has gone through P&amp;Z, and there was a variance request to not extend an 8-inch sewer through the platted frontage. Can you give us some more detail on what else was involved in this one, please?
That's correct, Mayor. As part of the replat application, what's being presented is a variance request to not extend a 8-inch minimum sewer line through the frontage of Kalinko. It's a requirement of our subdivision ordinance. If you look on the aerial photo, you can see the layout of the sewer lines. What's being proposed as Lot 2R to the north does not have the proposed sewer line along the frontage of Kalinko. However, all the adjoining properties are offered sewer services to gravity close to an existing main network within the area. There's no need to extend for that little piece of Kalinko to service another lot within the platted area. Everything basically is covered within the network. So P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the variance as presented and replat application as presented.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for staff regarding this?
If I'm understanding you right, Scott, you can tie in on what they already got on the property you're doing.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public want to speak regarding this particular item? We'll close the public hearing section of this. Council, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the replat of 801 and 853 Kalinko Drive. Hang on. Along with the variance for Section 3.9 and 4.5 of the subdivision ordinance. Now I can entertain your motion, Councilman.
We approve the said plan.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, a second by Mr. Perkel, to approve the replating of 801 and 853 Kalinko Court, along with a variance for Section 3.9 and 4.5 of the subdivision ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number two. At this time, we're going to open a public hearing regarding a request of Quicksilver Resources Incorporated to development plat a 2.633-acre tract of the J.C. Armstrong survey, abstract number three, and consider and approve said development replat, I'm sorry, development plat. The property is located southeast of the intersection of Acton Highway and Davis Road. The developer, who is Quicksilver Resources Incorporated, wishes to development plat an approximate 2.633-acre portion of land currently in a survey to conduct gas well activities. The site is located just outside of the city limits, but within our city's ETJ, and as such, we need to move forward with the development plat. So Scott, fill us in on a little bit more details on this one, please, sir.
Mayor, as this is outside the city, but within our ETJ, there is no zoning issues, no protection screening issues. There's only the development plat requirements as it relates to our standalone ordinance within the ETJ. There's a requirement that the applicant file development plat, it meets the minimum requirements of our subdivision ordinance in filing special plat. Part of the plat filing process is that a general grading plan be submitted to our city engineer. Our city engineer has looked at the general grading plan, has approved it. Therefore, the plat application meets our minimum requirements, and city staff and P&amp;Z recommend approval as presented.
I have a question for you regarding this. Are they required to show us ingress and egress on the plat?
They do, yes. In fact, on the...
I was looking at that, but I couldn't tell where ingress and egress was.
It's that, it's basically the dashed red line that comes along the southern portion of the property line.
Okay.
And we do have minimum requirements that it be a number-one grade base. Our fire inspectors all look at the depth of the number-one grade base and the width, and it meets our satisfactory requirements for ingress/egress.
All right. Council, anybody else have any questions for Scott regarding this particular item? Anybody from the public want to speak on this particular issue? We're going to close the public hearing portion of this. Entertain a motion at this time to approve a development plat by Quicksilver Resources Incorporated for a 2.633-acre tract of the J.C. Armstrong survey, abstract number three, located at the intersection of Acton Highway and Davis Road.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of approval of the development plat, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us up to item number three. This time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Newscope Marketing Incorporated to replat 5845 Acton Circle, being tract S of the Granbury Industrial Park as tracks SR and SR1 of the Granbury Industrial Park, and consider and approve said replat. Currently, there's a plat, this is a tract of land known as Tract S, and it's being divided or proposed to be divided into Tract SR and SR1. SR currently contains the existing facility, and SR1, from my understanding, is a vacant lot with a hard surface on it. Scott, you got more info for us?
Little bit more, Mayor. There's a litany of variances associated with the application. We have a variance to Section 39 and 46 regarding the requirement for central water line. The area is being served by Texas H-2O. It's a utility district currently in the area. It's outside the City of Granbury authorized district. At the time, prior to P&amp;Z, we did not have our requisite letter that we asked for stating that they have capacity and volume to serve the additional density. We have since received that letter. We have it in our file for reference. That's why you see somewhat of a distinction between staff's recommendation and a city engineer report that you have in your packet recommending conditional denial. Now that we have the letter, everything is copacetic, and we're recommending approval of that variance as presented. We have a variance to 39 and 45 regarding the subdivision ordinance requirement for sanitary sewer. That whole area is basically served with septic systems. It's consistent with the development throughout the platted industrial park. 31E regarding the requirement to build an urban standard facility. There's Acton Circle, basically is your standard county template with bar ditches. As a concession, the developer, as part of the plat, has submitted half of the difference of the right-of-way to accommodate the, any additional future improvement. We have a Section 36A4 regarding the policy for placement of commercial sidewalks, and 4A regarding the street side placement. But the additional Texas H-2O letter, city staff's recommending approval as presented with variances, and that recommendation was forwarded to P&amp;Z, and they did recommend approval of variances and the plat application as presented as well.
Thank you, Scott. Council, any questions for Scott regarding this particular item? Anybody from the public want to speak on this? We'll close the public hearing portion of this. With that public hearing portion closed, I'll entertain a motion to approve the replat of 5845 Acton Circle, being tract S of the Granbury Industrial Park as tracks SR and SR1 of the Granbury Industrial Park, along with a list of submitted variances. Anybody on council want to approve, entertain the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Councilman Parson makes the motion, need a second, please.
I'll take it.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this motion? All in favor of replat approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moves us to item number four. We will now open a public hearing regarding a request of Keith and Ann Tipton for a specific use permit for 420 West Bridge Street to allow the operation of a one-guest suite hosted bed-and-breakfast facility, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said Scott, I understand that this is for a single-family residential area, rated R 8.4 in a district, and can you tell us what else is involved with this? I understand it was a three-year SUP?
Correct, Mayor. Our zoning ordinance requires an SUP in single-family residential, which is the more protected land use classification zone. To give you a little history, if you've been by the site, you'll notice that they don't have approved hard surface there, but they are within the historic overlay. They did run the traps through the historic commission, got approval to allow them to use the crushed gravel there onsite within the overlay district, which our zoning ordinance had gives the historic commission the authority to do so. So they crossed that hurdle, they went through P&amp;Z. What's being presented is an application to have it owner occupied as a one-guest suite hosted B&amp;B. The property needs to accommodate one additional parking space for the one additional guest suite. They do have that onsite. If approved, the only thing that staff needs to do after the fact, if approved, is just to inspect the fire alarm system once approved. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval as presented for three years.
Three-year period.
Correct.
Anybody have questions for staff regarding this particular item? Once again, this is a three-year SUP. Anybody from the public want to speak on this? We're going to close the public hearing portion of this item. With that closed, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance providing for a three-year SUP for the property located at 420 West Bridge to operate a one-guest suite hosted bed-and-breakfast facility.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson, need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us to item number five. At this time, we'll open a public hearing and consider and approve a request of FBA Land Holdings LLC, Granbury, Texas, Arbor House LP, Coats Blackman Financial Services LLC, and Judy Coats to replat Lot 1, Block 3, and Lot 1R, Block 4, of the villages of Stone Brook, and a 9.645-acre tract of the Lot 21 of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, to be lots 1R1 and 1R2, Block 3, and 1R1 and 1R2, Block 4, of the villages of Stone Brook Addition. The property is located south of West Highway 377, north of Autumn Ridge Drive, and west of Wright and Row Court. I noticed we had a list of several owners of the property, Scott, and also, it's one of the issues that was also noted in our packet was that we don't have the parent company owner signature on this particular piece of property because we can't find everybody that is part of the parent company or something of that nature.
We're having difficulty acquiring the signatures. This piece of property has a little bit of a history, and then some of the, some of the property has been horse-traded a little bit outside the realm of the subdivision ordinance. But ultimately, what we'd like to see is this property unhinged and development activity take place, which is beneficial for the property owners that currently have it, as well as the City of Granbury. What we have basically is a piece of property, that we have two areas, that some of the property's been foreclosed on in bits and pieces, and switched hands, like I said, outside of the subdivision ordinance by meets and bounds. We have a couple of variances associated with this, 39 and 46 regarding the subdivision ordinance, minimum water, 8-inch minimum water line requirements, and the water variances, the sewer variances, the streetlight variances do not apply to the Autumn Ridge portion of the property, street frontage. They would apply to the 377 exit gore. And a little bit more on this property, if you, if, when the developer was first looking at this in 2002, 2003, they were actually trying to plan this out as a boulevard exit point onto 377, and there was a lot of hardship in getting a boulevard entrance toward an exit gore where speeds were declining, and the developer, long story short, was not very successful in that. So these variances that are associated with 377 are very logical because there's no expectation that there'll be access in the future based on textiles history onto 377. So P&amp;Z and city staff are recommending approval of the variances to 39 and 46 regarding the water line on 377, streetlights on 377, and 39 and 45 regarding sanitary sewer on 377. We've got another variance, 31E regarding the urban standard street along 377, and our subdivision ordinance also requires for the extension and projection of existing streets into the subdivided area. That would be Row and Wright Court, which is that area that's outside, just outside to the east, is currently in the ETJ. It's in the county, it's not part of the city. The subdivision ordinance almost promotes extending that into the area, and that would be, as this develops, a detriment to the development of the property. You can see where the nursing home is, that it goes kind of into that area that's owned to interim holding, that width where it kind of next down is 60 feet. So this has basically been parceled out in an area where we have enough width for a road if that development is dense enough to warrant the extension of a road, or if it warrants just like a, for example, multifamily type development, just a fire lane. We can, we can assess that from a planning standpoint later down the line when we get some application and a rezoner request. So the projection of Row and Wright would basically be a detriment to ingress/egress into that portion of the lot, noting that there's no access onto 377. And then lastly, we have a variance to, as the mayor said, 24A regarding the requirement to include the entire parent tract on the subdivided boundary. Again, that portion that's to the west, we couldn't acquire the signatures. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the variances before you and the replat as presented by the applicant.
Scott, I've got a question for you. When I look at the survey of the property, it, it looks totally different from the depiction that I saw, the yellow outline that you just had up on the screen. It just doesn't look the same to me. What are we seeing with the yellow outline?
We are seeing, in essence, a not-quite-exact presentation of the final parcel, the portion of the property once platted. So, when you're looking at, um...
Because when I'm looking at the survey, I'm seeing the straight line just as it shows the property boundary.
On the Coats Blackman Building, for example?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And looking at the Coats Blackman Building, where you're seeing that straight line come up from the street to the south?
Yes.
That was the previous property line. That property line and those adjoining utility easements are proposed to be abandoned per this plat application and shifted over to the east, which would be more, once approved, more of this kind of rounded effect, and...
And then the same is happening over on the, I guess that would be the west side of the Arbor House?
That's correct.
So there's still horse trading going on?
No, they're actually trying to depict the lot lines, which is what's in their title right now.
I see.
Yeah.
According to meets and bounds, then?
So the, the yellow lines that you see basically is what they're trying, the finished product of what they're trying to get to post-horse trading, I guess.
All right. So anybody else on council have questions for Scott? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I have two, two questions. We don't know who really owns this property. They haven't come and signed for it yet. Kind of hard for us to prove this.
No, it's the parent tract. This was, if I understand right, this was all one big parent tract at one time, but then it's been sold off over the years, and you've got to find all the different owners of the parent tract and get them all on, onto...
Sign for it.
Yes. And that's become the issue.
Who, who's the developer on this?
There's real, really not a developer, per se, and that's why you're seeing some of the land that's still zoned interim holding. I think the...
They brought it to the city.
FBA Land Holding, Judy Coats, Coats and Blackman, they basically, Coats Blackman, the, the nursing home, FBA Land Holding, which I think is a financial institution, and Judy Coats have gotten together cooperatively to try to remedy and depict what the legal lot lines should be as it currently stands with some of the meets and bounds.
Good deal. That is kind of a horse trading, as you said, kind of curious.
Well, and I say horse trading, there, there's been some foreclosures on the property. The previous property owner has kind of divested him... Uh, the previous property owner has kind of divested himself reluctantly out of this and, uh, the financial institution that, I guess, uh, the previous owner had put, you know, the property up as some amount of equity came and acquired the property, not by subdividing the property, but, but by acquiring the property through meets and bounds, and now we're just trying to remedy it.
This will allow them to pro, uh, to actually move forward with development of this property?
Is there any of the people that's involved in this, or they hear?
I believe there's a couple of them. I see one, two.
They can enlighten us a little bit on it.
All right. Well, when we get there.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Uh, anybody else have, uh, on council want to have a question for Scott regarding this item? All right. Uh, at this time, I'd invite anybody from the public to come up and speak, and council may have questions for you. If you would, please come to the podium.
I do want to add one thing while Don makes his way up here.
All right.
Um, the one thing that we did have a concern with is a setback encroachment, uh, issue possible, and Don was good enough to give, give us a separate survey. If you notice where the Coats-Blackman building has a covered carport, that it gets pretty close to the property line, the new proposed property line that's depicted.
Right.
Um, Don Hickey did go out there and run a separate survey to show that it met the side setback requirement, so we're not plating a side setback encroachment, uh, with the drawing of this new property line.
Okay. Mr. Hickey, if you would, just please tell us who you are for the record, please.
I'm Don Hickey with Brooks Baker Surveyors, and I've been working on trying to get this platted almost longer than I can remember.
Well, Mr. Allen had a question regarding, uh, some of the difficulties, and Mr. Allen did, you want, want to...
Let me, let me answer one of your questions while I go first.
Sure. Okay.
The reason this thing has been such a chore to get platted, uh, the Coats-Blackman property, before they bought it, was platted as Lot 1, whatever block that is, but it went outside the bounds of what he sold to them meets and bounds. So, the, the, the FBA tract that they foreclosed on, and Coats-Blackman, all had to agree to replat to get a common lot line between them because they all own pieces of that one lot. And that was the big holdup for the longest time. When, when you start trying to plat property and you've got one, two, three, four, five different people involved, and four of those five don't want to pay a penny to get it replatted, and one of them can't do anything with his property until he does, the, the FBA, or the ones that foreclosed. So, once they got down to seeing what they could do with their property after they got it platted, on the, on the northeast corner of the, uh, Arbor House, next to the little subdivision over there on the right, there wasn't but 50 feet of room between those two tracks. So, if they ever wanted to put a, a 60-foot street in coming out to Autumn Ridge, they would have to have 10 more feet. So, they dealt with Arbor House to swap 10 feet off of Arbor House to have 60 feet wide when they get it platted. The same thing over on the west side of Arbor House. They, FBA thought they...
Scott, could you take us back to the yellow outline drawing? I believe he's referring to that.
On the west side, they, they, FBA thought there was foreclosed on a 50-foot strip that chose to go all the way from 377 to Autumn Ridge, that the gentleman that originally bought that track didn't have in the deal. And so, then they found out he has judgments, and they can't get clear title to it even if they deal with him for it. So, at that time, we, we were trying to get a total of 60 feet over there, and maybe he could acquire that someday. So, we end up doing a triangle on the west side, a triangle on the east side, and giving Arbor House another triangle equal the same acreage. And they agreed to do that. As soon as this plat is, is, uh, okayed, then they will close the meets and bounds tract. I will show the volume pages on the plat, and then it'll all, different pieces will be platted properly.
You'll actually get some sleep.
I'll actually holler, "Hooray!"
Uh, did that answer your question, Mr. Allen?
Yeah, and, and Don, you've done some surveying for me, and, and it just looked like a big puzzle. It wasn't nothing I was saying was illegal about it, but I'm a horse trader too, so whenever I used to wear a horse trader, I'm wondering what's going on there.
I understand...
Look at myself in the mirror when I say that, but...
I understand the big kicker to this whole deal was that Coats-Blackman and FBA own pieces of that original platted lot, and so neither one of them could plat without the other one agreeing. And then you got into trying to get them 60 feet circle for access.
No, whenever you was talking about tracing that side of the land where you could get the other, get 60 feet, that makes sense.
That was the whole purpose of...
Yeah, no problem.
Trying to get it traded.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hickey? Thank you, sir. We appreciate the information. So, at this time, uh, anybody else from the public want to speak on this particular item? Not, "We're going to close the public hearing now," but the public hearing closed, I'll entertain a motion to approve a replat of Lot, let me get it straight here, a replat of Lot 1, Block 3, and Lot 1R of Block 4 of the Villages of Stone Brook, and a 9.645 acre tract of Lot 21 of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, to be lots 1R1 and 1R2, Block 3, and 1R1 and 1R2, Block 4, of the Villages of Stone Brook addition, along with a list of variances as they were presented. Entertain that motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Parsons. I need a second. A second by Mr. Perkel. Any other discussion regarding this particular replat?
I met a city council person from Gun Barrel City the other day, and she said I should have called Granberry.
(laughing) Thank you for that. All, any other discussion regarding the replat?
All for questions.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night's sleep to you, Mr. Hickey. At this time, we'll open a public hearing, item number six. We'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Lynn and Marcy Turney to preliminary plat of 37.139 acre tract of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 through 19, Block 1, and lots 1 through 30, Block 2, lots 1 through 27, Block 3, and lots 1 through 24, and a common area known as Block 4, of the Belleterra addition. And consider and approve said preliminary plat. This property is located southeast of the intersection of Holmes Drive and West Highway 377. What's being planned is, they're looking to purchase this portion of property, planning for a gated residential community to come forth in the very near future. And Scott, please enlighten us on this particular issue that we have before us, please.
Mayor, Council, this property's located on the west side of the city, uh, just to the east of Holmes Road. It, uh, has water and sewer available to it over by the TSC store, so the, uh, the preliminary plat proposal is to extend water and sewer from its present location, uh, network it through the proposed subdivision, and then provide for the extensions on the west side of the property for continuation at a later date. Uh, what the, what the developer is really interested in is that area that's basically subdivided and shown as a residential portion of the property. The attorneys are expected to retain the northern portion of that, which is a single lot of record. Um, what we expect to see, uh, if approved tonight, is a set of engineering plans being submitted to our contract, contract engineer, Freeze and Nichols, and a final plat subsequently after that. Potentially, this will be done in phases, uh, along with the final, expected final plat application. The developer has expressed an interest to go ahead and annex this area into the city and have the building permit activity conducted by the city, uh, as well as, uh, it'll be rezoned at that time. During the zoning process, what the developer is, has expressed an interest in is to also present a Mediterranean-style type development. I think the developer's still on the border a little bit on whether or not he wants to entertain private streets that's shown preliminarily as a gated subdivision, but I think that assessment will be made at the time the final plat's filed. There are no variances associated with this. Uh, everything appears leased at first flush on the preliminary plat to meet our minimum design standards contained within subdivision ordinance. As such, uh, there's a ministerial obligation to approve it as presented. PNC and City Staff recommend approval as presented.
Any questions from council regarding this particular preliminary plat issue?
There's the subdivision that's going to be participating in order?
That I, I'm not aware of.
Is it out there by Tractor Supply, Scott?
It's just to the west of Tractor Supply, uh, and you can see on the aerial map, uh, just south of where the split comes back together.
Go back off to one of the gentlemen, yeah, it's going to be a good, good study.
Uh, the issue, uh, you know, will come to us under a final plat in the near future if this is approved tonight, so we'll know more at that time regarding the community and, uh, whether it's going to actually be gated and, uh, fall within the, uh, annexation of the city. But what we have before us right now is a motion, uh, entertain a motion for the preliminary plat approval, so any other questions for Scott regarding this particular issue? Anybody from the public want to speak regarding this? This is your chance. Not, "We're going to close the public hearing right now," entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat of a 37.139 acre tract of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 through 19, Block 1, lots 1 through 30, Block 2, lots 1 through 27, Block 3, and lots 1 through 24 in a common area in Block 4, of the Belleterra addition. And approve this preliminary plat.
I'll move.
You have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this particular, this particular preliminary plat? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number seven. This time, we're going to open up a public hearing regarding a request of Pecan Reserve Land Company to rezone property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Waters Edge Drive and Hill Boulevard, addressed as 1111 Hill Boulevard and 1301 Waters Edge Drive, being a 4.360 acre tract of the Martin Seltzer Survey, abstract number 502, from residential 8,400 to light commercial, I'm sorry, residential 8,400, R8.4 slash light commercial to multifamily, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. This issue came before PNC. PNC put a statement into their, uh, decision regarding the fact that, uh, multifamily dwelling serves as a bit of a buffer zone between the commercial and the single-family residents that surround the area. So, Scott, if you would, enlighten us a little bit more. I understand there's a tree conservation plan as well that's been submitted by the developer.
Absolutely, Mayor. Uh, would the mayor entertain, uh, opening the plat as well?
I'm sorry. Yes, I, I could do that as well. And at the same time that we open this public hearing, I'm going to move down and open up, uh, item number eight as well, since both of them are regarding the same thing. We'll open the public hearing regarding a request of Pecan Reserve Land Company to amend the preliminary plat for a 12.240 acre tract of the Martin Seltzer Survey, abstract number 502, as lots 1 through 3, Block 2, of the Pecan Reserve addition, and consider and approve said amended plat. The property is located at southeast corner of the intersection of Waters Edge Drive and Hill Boulevard. This, uh, will basically serve as a follow-up gesture on the first item that we're going to be hearing from.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What we have is, uh, two applications, one of which is a rezoning request. Actually, PNC had three applications. The tree conservation plan, as mentioned by the mayor, was approved. Uh, the layout of the site design that was printed, uh, and submitted to the PNC showed as much minimal impact on existing pecans, uh, within the tree conservation plan. Just to show you a quick synopsis, what's circled in red are the four smallest trees within the, uh, platted boundary being taken out, uh, by the proposed development. What's being replaced as the number of credits and caliper inches actually far exceed those caliper inches being taken out, so there is no monetary payment needed by the developer as he's replacing the caliper inches, which far exceeds the four trees that he's taken out. He's done a good job of positioning the buildings around the larger, much larger trees in order to retain those as an amenity to the site. Onto the rezoning request. What's being presented by the applicant is to, um, subdivide the property and then have one of the lots, which is the northeasternmost lot, uh, being carved out as a proposed site for a future multifamily complex. It's currently zoned light commercial, and there is a 75-foot strip that borders the South Grove Residential, uh, subdivision to the east. We did receive one letter of protest. We had some, uh, amount of discussion by adjoining property owners at PNC, but we had one formal protest filed with, with the development staff. It comprises approximately two-tenths of a percent. The site design elevations that were tied to the rezoning request as well, what we're looking at is approximately 48 dwelling units, meeting our masonry standards. Uh, it'll be two-story, and again, the site was designed in a manner, in, in order to actually try to use as much of the, uh, natural vegetation there on site around the larger trees. Uh, and being somewhat mindful of the, uh, protected area adjoining South Grove, um, the developer also attempted to position the buildings, um, perpendicular to the adjoining residential. That way, the second-story balconies don't, uh, approximately look over to the adjoining neighborhood located to the west or to the east. We've included some of the discussion from 2005 in your agenda packet, so you can get a little flavor of the history, uh, in the minutes from the previous PNC and the city council as to what their thought process was during their deliberations when they set that, uh, 75-foot residential buffer in place. Uh, the second issue that came during the, the staff report on this particular proposal was the consistency with the comprehensive plan. As the mayor mentioned, the PNC had to deliberate and make some findings for record as to what changes have taken place since the, since the adoption of the comp plan. If you look at the zoning map in the upper right, you can basically see generally where the site is located. It's located in an area that's denoted as beige, which is single-family detached. Uh, if it were single-family attached or higher-density residential, you could see a darker orange there looking across the street, similar color to, uh, denote where Charter House is, for example. Uh, it is unaborder. The, the area just to the north of that is red, denotes commercial. So, there is that flexibility to look at the comprehensive plan and say whether or not you need a buffer or a kind of a tier-down effect going from commercial to somewhat of a higher-density residential to a lower-density... residential to a lower-density residential. Certainly, P&amp;Z and council has that latitude, but when you look at this area on the map on the comprehensive plan, it doesn't expressly show that as, as a higher-density residential, but certainly you can make those deliberations when you vote. Lastly, on the plat application, we have some variances associated with the plat. We have a variance to 3945 to not extend Centenary Sewer along the length of Hill Boulevard. You look at Hill Boulevard, familiar with the site, you know that it kind of traverses and heads westerly from 377, and you have that buffer area that's in the corner. That was part of a zoning covenant made when Loews came in. That's a, an area that they have to maintain and landscape. It's not going to be used for development. Where they're getting sewer from basically is at the intersection of Redbird Lane and Second Street, and there will be, you can look at the utility map, this is a very rudimentary schematic, but you can actually see coming from the north of the top of the picture, which is heading east into the little stub street is where an existing manhole is, and the service lines will actually go to a manhole on the southeast corner of the property and then flow into an existing manhole along Redbird. There's also a variance to water, again, not to extend it along the length of Hill Boulevard. What they're proposing to do is actually network it through the interior of the development and traverse it west in an off-site easement, and then tie it into a stub from the Loews property. When we planted Loews property, we actually had them space stubs where people on the south side of Hill Boulevard could connect rather than boring. So they don't have to go through the cost of the bore, they just need to get to the We also have a variance to 31D to not allow for the continuation or projection of the sub-street into the proposed one lot, lot 2 of the amended preliminary plat. This is that street that was shown as Second Street, and hearing from the developer and his deliberations with the adjoining property owners, I know he went out and put boots on the ground and knocked on doors as to whether or not they would support the non-extension. Of course, I think everybody is, from what we're understanding, supportive of not extending Second Street into the, or opening access to the proposed multifamily development onto South Grove. So those are the three variances. The part of the site design, I can tell you as well, is to extend and continue the decorative double-sided fence along the eastern property in order to close off that stub street as well, to seal it off. That's part of his initial site design and would be tied to the zoning of the property as, as a covenant that he would need to do if approved. So be happy to entertain any questions if you have any. City staff recommends if you find, when you deliberate and record the need to change the comprehensive plan or the, find the allowance to accommodate the need to support the zoning request in changing the comprehensive plan on the fly and make those mentions in the minutes as P&amp;Z did. Staff would recommend approval as recommend approval of the plat variances associated.
All right, Scott, I've got a question for you. You said there's how many dwellings inside of this, 48?
Forty-eight.
And I'm looking at the site development plan. That one right there.
Okay.
I'm seeing only one ingress and egress point, is that correct?
That's correct.
And an average family has two cars, right? I mean, we're talking a lot of vehicle traffic in, in and out in one entrance in case of fire. How, how safe is this proposal in case of fire?
Yes.
I'm just looking at the, you know, a devil's advocate perspective. Why don't we have Second Street open up to where it can be another ingress egress point to allow that? The what-if factor that could happen in case of a fire breaks out in this area, you've got to get trucks in there and people out of there.
I can, I can tell you, our fire inspector during the RC and city engineer looked at this, and they did not have a problem with it. I'm not overly familiar with the trip generation tables of the traffic engineers, but I can tell you that the trip generation, production and attraction is somewhat less than the standard single-family residential home. It's not expected that everybody in a dwelling unit there have two cars. You may have some single-unit lots or single-unit dwellings there on-site, but again, our fire inspector and city engineer looked at it, and they did not see an issue with just one means of ingress egress into Hill Boulevard.
All right. Can I get you to speak into your microphone for me, please? It's green, it's on.
Okay. Was this the development in planning and zoning when I was on, years ago, that we had trouble with that entrance? Then we were going to put a breakaway gate possibly. Is there one further down a breakaway gate?
There, no, that was actually, that's the residential to the south, that's Josiah Estates. And there was, based on the developer's proposal, a breakaway and emergency gate. It's not direct access, but it-
It's not direct exit.
It's a wrought iron gate that's breakaway and has a knox box for emergency ingress egress. And that is a substantial-sized residential development for a single-family detached.
Any other questions for staff regarding this particular item?
Scott, I go.
All right, let's go with Mr. Hewlett.
Mine kind of based on what the mayor's saying, there's a lot of traffic there, especially the traffic coming in and out of Loews, that has that exit right there on that road right there. Now, first of all, is there any future plans on the property to the west of that?
I-
It goes right on to Waters Edge, because I mean, it looks like it's going to attach, and then they're going to come and ask for a zoning there to build maybe the same thing, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what the immediate plans are for the property to the west. If I can, Mayor, I can defer to you, and the developer is in the audience, if you want to hear from him on what his expectations are from future development to the west.
All right.
My thoughts are though, because, you know, when we get down to the end there, I mean, we're looking at traffic lines, and then when we only have one entranceway to this thing, and then that, that road is really busy right there coming around the corner there of the Loews and the other exits there, it's just, you know, how they could, how they could get out, in and out of there with an emergency situation.
Yeah, I can tell you the way this is set up, and again, I may want to defer to the developer-
Yeah.
But the way this is set up on the design, if I can get to the site plan here, is the developer's proposing to have this as a gated subdivision with a turnaround.
Besides development.
Yeah. Maybe that's it. But there'll be, when you, when you enter the property, there'll be two points of ingress egress through private gates. You can see the, the office location just to the lower left-hand corner, there'll be parking, but the city engineer, when we actually look at the site, will, will make sure that there's enough stacking space and turnaround space, and that's why you see the little bubble out there for people that aren't able to get to the gate, don't need to turn around and come back, and that there's ample space for them to queue and ingress back onto Hill The developer may want to add something regarding the site design.
Before I bring him up, any other questions for Scott? Councilman Allen?
Thank you. Scott, right now, how many parking spaces is the city requiring for the 48 units?
I believe multifamily is one, one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. I'd have to check the zoning ordinance real quick.
So it states it's not even 96. Okay. Next question is, is what you're asking for approval of, is that just for the 48 units or is it any additional land?
No, not the additional land. Basically, what is being requested by the developer tonight is for just that area for this particular lot, for the rezoning, that's bordered in yellow-
Yes.
-for the 48 units.
And that's where the units are going to go?
Yes.
All 48?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything else to the west of that, Councilman Allen, is zoned like commercial, so if they wanted, they couldn't extend multifamily from that point unless they come back to the council and rezonate.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons, did you have a question for Scott?
I don't recall, this is not federally subsidized, we've not received any letters on this one.
Not on this property. All right, can I ask the developer to come up?
Is it two?
Okay. Are you Mr. McMan-
I'm John McMackin.
McMackin, thank you, sir.
Sir.
And can you give us your address just for the record, please?
My address is 105 Stonehurst Court in Alito, Texas.
Thank you for being here, Mr. McMackin. As, as you heard, we've got a few concerns, mainly having to do with ingress egress, emergency evacuation, those kind of scenarios. You know that this has become a major feeder street for the Harbor Lakes and Waters Edge area, as well as you've got South Grove to the opposite side. And, and I'm just curious, was there any, what are your thoughts as to how to get people in and out in case of emergencies, sir?
Um, is what we really heard from, from the people that we talked to is that, that we didn't want to increase the traffic count through South Grove, because like you said, there's already a lot of traffic generated coming in, back behind through South Grove to get up on the Hill Boulevard. So we, we, we had to bring the entrance to the, to the development, I believe 350 feet off of the radius of the curb to meet the city's standards. And we feel that the design that we came up with, there's plenty of, there's plenty of room for 48, 48 dwellings. If we were to move further to the west, we would, we would have to have another curb And we also, we own that land all the way to Waters Edge Drive, and we intend on developing it in a like commercial method.
Is there anything to stop you, though, from traversing at, if we, can you take us back to the zoning map, the, where I see the yellow? This one right here. Is there anything, since you own the property, that stopped you from taking what's on the lower left-hand side of, of the yellow track and continuing a pathway through your commercial properties all the way down to Waters Edge and having another exit, so to speak, on your-
To the west?
Yes, sir.
That would be a very, very long road.
I know. But you're going to be developing at some point in the future, though, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But I don't think we'd want another road coming off of Waters Edge Drive. We'd want to come into there, because my next thoughts are that, that once this does, if you redevelop this or replat that existing property there, which sounds like you're going to in the future, then-
The property to the west?
To the west, right.
Correct.
Property, right. Then, you know, it's almost like you're going to need a stoplight there, because that's really a busy intersection right now.
Mm-hmm. Apparently, it's served by just a single stoplight.
You've got all the people coming over and using that too now, you know, that back way is just as busy as the front.
Hill Boulevard has generated some, some good, some good traffic, and the intersection of Hill Boulevard and Waters Edge Drive gets a lot of traffic.
It sure does.
Probably more than they ever anticipated when they first put it in.
This is going to-
You know, the thing that we've got to think about here is, is I don't think you could put a road all the way down there, Mayor, like you're talking about, or like you're talking about, because that would determine how he develops his commercial at a later day. But we've got two subdivisions right across the street there, the Island and Cantley and Bay, that's got more than 48 units, you know, 48 houses. I guarantee everyone in those houses has two cars. There's only one entrance in and out of them. And if I lived in South Grove, I'd rather have that there than commercial. Sure couldn't put a single family in there, develop in that area. The land's too valuable, one thing, the other thing is, it's going to get nothing there to do any good probably. It's probably the best thing for it is, is the apartment.
We think that it's a very good transition from the residential to the like commercial.
Yep. And, and of course, I mean, I'm like you on the in and out, but if you really think about a lot of gated communities, only have one in and one out, you know, and they got more than 48 units.
When we, when we put our plan together, we really, we sat down and we, we sent everyone a letter, we followed it up with another letter prior to getting their letter from the city, sat down and actually talked to some of them, and they, the citizens back there really gave us some good feedback. That's one of the reasons why we want to block off Second Street, and the noise was, we moved the dumpsters as far into the like commercial as we possibly could, where they didn't create any noise. We oriented the buildings to where the balconies wouldn't look down into their backyard. We've really, we, we, we think that we've addressed just about every concern. The only concern that we couldn't address was a, was a perception that the surrounding home values would be compromised, and I, we just, we don't think that that's the case, that the value of the homes and the land in that area are going to go up with the development of raw land into either like commercial, multifamily, or residential. We really feel like it's, eventually, that con orchard is going to be developed, and we want to do it properly.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public want to speak on this? This time, we're going to close the public hearings for the rezone request, as well as a public hearing for a request to amend a preliminary plat. Items number seven and eight. We'll address item number seven first. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a rezoning from R8.4 slash LC to multifamily as it will provide a good buffer between the residential neighborhoods and the nearby commercial zones, and to approve the rezoning as presented.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Requires a second. Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion? All in favor of rezoning 1111 Hill Boulevard and 1308 Waters Edge Drive being a 4.360 acre tract of the Martin Seltzer Survey Abstract Number 502 from residential R8.4 slash LC to multifamily? As it would provide a good buffer between the residential neighborhoods and the nearby commercial zones, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, and approve the ordinance providing for said rezoning. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll move to item number eight now. As that hearing is also closed, entertain a motion to approve the amended preliminary plat for a 12.240 acre tract of the Martin Seltzer Survey Abstract Number 502, as lots 1 through 3 Block 2 of the Pecan Reserve Edition, and consider and approve this amended plat. The property is located at the Waters Edge Drive and Hill Boulevard as presented.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett. Need a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us down to items number nine, 10, and 11. Council members, I'd like to mention that prior to the meeting at 3 o'clock today, we finally were in receipt of an appraisal, and it was placed on the dais for you to look at. It's also come to my attention that this item also involves Granberry Historic Properties. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to postpone this until the May 15th meeting, so that we'll have time to digest the appraisal, as well as it would give Granberry Historic Properties a chance to decide on moving forward with their aspect of these proposals. Entertain a motion once again to postpone items number nine, 10, and 11 until May 15th.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Parsons, second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Brings us down to item number 12. Item number 12, consider and approve a concession lease agreement with BLG N Company Incorporated to provide concession services for the city's concession areas at the City Beach, Tiki Hut, Moore Street Ballfields, Crossland Ballfields- Moore Street Ballfields, Crossland Ballfields, and the Dana Volmer Municipal Swim Center. If you'll remember, council, during our last city council budget session, we had talked about the possibility of getting out of the concession business and turning it over to a leasing. Uh, we went out for bids, the city advertised for bids, and we received a bid in at the last minute. And, uh, we'll turn this over to our city manager, Mr. McKethan, to tell us what has come before us.
Uh, yes, we did some analysis as to whether or not outsourcing would be appropriate for the city. Um, we employ quite a few people for the concession as a seasonal employee. With the increased employment requirements that are being put on seasonal employees by the employment regulations, we lost $26,000 last year, um, in the concession. And so we felt it would be better to give an entrepreneur within the city an opportunity to have this concession that has more expertise perhaps, and can actually generate more revenue. Um, therefore, staff is recommending that we went forward, that we would go forward with outsourcing, uh, these positions. It would lower the government employment and give entrepreneurs a chance to handle the service. We went out with an RFQ, we had one bid, where the staff is recommending that we accept this bid. We demanded, or we basically in the RFQ requested 10% of revenue. He came back with 11%. Uh, he has the proper, huh?
Yeah.
In lieu of rent. Well, this is an outsourcing of operational services. This is not a rent situation. We will supply the equipment, utilities, he's just replacing the operational support with his own people, and it's not, it's an outsourcing opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, I'd like to point out, council members, if you look at the concession lease agreement, item number three of the concession lease agreement reads concessionaire will remit to the city by 11 a.m. each Tuesday, an amount equal to 10% of the gross receipts. That should be changed to read 11% of the gross receipts, as the, uh, as submitted in his proposal. Uh, it is also, uh, at this point that I'd like to mention that any equipment that's currently inside of the concession stands remains the property of the city of Granberry, and as such, if it fails during its operation, will be maintained by the city of Granberry. And we have a supplemental list, if you look at your exhibit A, it is a comprehensive list as to what is in each one of the concession stand areas. As you know, we've been operating concessions since the concession stands have come into operation. And at this time, we were outsourcing for a services contract with somebody else to operate the concession. So as a result, it's not really a lease agreement so much as it is a services agreement contract. And it would run for one year, with the addition to renew after that calendar year for one full calendar year. So this is from May 1st, uh, the current contract period is from May 1st, 2012, through to December 31st of 2012, with an option to renew at the start of the new calendar year. So-
It's a partial year.
Yeah, it's a partial year, it's not a full year. So with those items before us, entertain a motion to accept this contract, let me get the language just right, entertain a motion to approve a concession lease agreement with BL Gin Company Incorporated, along with the city of Granberry, for concession services at the concession stands located throughout the city.
Go move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second, please?
Next.
A second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding the agreement? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This motion carries. Brings us to item number 13. Consider and adopt a resolution providing for amendment to section 16.11, travel attendance at conferences, schools, et cetera, of the Granberry Personnel Policies Manual by adding paragraph H under section 16.11, part three, addressing out-of-state travel. This item was brought to us by the city manager, and I'm gonna let him address this particular item, and then we'll go into some discussion regarding this.
Well-
Mr. McKethan?
As we discussed last, um, in the last meeting, basically, and we have in with other discussions, I thought it was appropriate to bring forth a policy change on out-of-state travel. Now, I've expanded it from the council to also include the employees and any boards and commissions. It was my opinion and thought that the community seemed interested in any travel outside the state, and so therefore, I'm putting forth a policy change that would basically limit, not limit it so much as to not do it, but at least to come forward with a budget adjustment, uh, for any out-of-state travel. Now, I understand that it's a very conservative policy. We might have a situation where we need to go outside for purposes, but my opinion is we can come forward to the council and get approval at that time, because all budgeted travel would be assumed to be inside the state of Texas. Now, during the budget process, if we bring forth, uh, situations where we feel that in fact, we would have out-of-state travel, we'd bring that forth to the council for approval at the budget process, and segregate that travel into an out-of-state travel account that would be discussed in the budget process itself. And so only the travel would be inside.
All right. I'm gonna start off the discussion. One of the issues that I see with this is, we're addressing something within the Granberry Personnel Policies Manual, that the council is not covered under the Granberry Personnel Policies Manual, as such. And we sort of, as a council, sort of regulate ourself and our own spending and our own policies and procedures, and we do that during our budgets session. Now, for us to carry this over to the Granberry Personnel Policies Manual, it means that it could put some impedance on the police department, for instance. Say they've got to go out and they've got to do an investigation, that requires them to follow a lead that's out-of-state, they will now have to come to the council to get approval for those expenses. And I don't believe there's been an issue with them being over budget on their travel, for instance, just the police department. I don't believe we've had any issues where we've had to balance the budget or make a budget adjustment to accommodate travel. And the same thing could be said for somebody attending a training seminar. For instance, we've got somebody in the tourism industry that's going to attend a conference, a national conference that relates to the Tourism Travel Agency, and they're gonna go to DC for a convention. Once again, that person has to come to us, whereas if we're saying in their budget to begin with, that they've got X number of dollars for travel, irregardless of in-state, out-of-state. Now, overseas, maybe we should have something in there, but I don't believe we need to put more burden onto the employees to come before council, and it also becomes a burden for the council to add it to an agenda. So I, I'm a little hesitant to see us moving forward with this. I understand where it's coming from, but I think we should be addressing this as a council during our upcoming budget discussion and workshop. Anybody else on council have any discussion on this particular issue?
Mayor, no disrespect, but I think it's a good rule, not only for the city council, but for all employees of the city. And if we gotta go before the council get approval to go to Vegas, or Chicago, or wherever, I don't think it's any more burden on us to approve one for our employees to go out-of-state. And I think you're gonna do it, and it should be all of it. Just my opinion.
And if I could just comment on what you've said, it's my responsibility as city manager to bring forth those issues in the budget process. If we feel there's some dollar amounts that need to be discussed for the police, for the tourism, I'll bring those forward and segregate them, like I said before, and that'll be done on the front end. Then if in fact, there is more than that being done, then we would come forward with an amendment.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak as an employee and not as a city?
Uh, let me, first, let me hear from anybody else on council, okay? And anybody else on council want to speak regarding this?
Mayor, I got one question on the issue. I mean, you addressed it a little bit there, but, uh, as far as, uh, you know, a person happened to get it approved by council, I see, you know, that could be a burden, I mean, especially if the person finds out they're gonna have to go out-of-state, or out-of-country even, uh, and there's no council meeting coming up. So the person probably would go anyway, and then come back, and then would go through a process of approving their finishes, you know, as far as they go. So is it possible that we could just change it to where the person goes on his own, or she, and makes the trip on their own, then comes back and files the report, and also files the expenditures, and gets them approved or disapproved?
Well, this is exactly the kind of discussion I wanted to have, to make sure everybody understood exactly what those procedures are doing.
Because I feel it's pretty tough to go ahead and, like the mayor stated, and I gotta agree with it, if, you know, it could be circumstances where the person's gonna wanna go out of town, or have to go out of town, and, you know, either gonna have to call a special meeting, or let them go and talk about it later. I don't know if that's been covered or not.
What do you do?
Anybody else? Uh, hang on just a second, Mr. Allen. All right, uh, let me hear from the counselor now.
I want to speak and say this as a role of an employee and not necessarily as a city attorney. I'll tell you about the legal part in a minute. I want, as an employee and as a department head, I want you to think about how overbroad this policy is. Basically, this policy would say that if I wanted to go to a Texas City Attorney Association Conference in El Paso, that I could either drive 14 hours and build the city for all my time in a car, or I could catch a plane and fly to El Paso, because that's in Texas, without getting any kind of approval from the council, as long as it's in budget, but I wouldn't be able to go the three hours it takes to get to Shreveport, or to Oklahoma City for a national conference. And I just, I mean, that's just an example of how overbroad this is. Now, putting my city attorney hat on, the resolution you have in front of you, the mayor is exactly right, the council's not governed by the Personnel Policy Manual, neither are boards or commissions. So if you want to approve this resolution, it would only apply to city staff members and employees, because that's the only people governed by the Employment Manual. The council does have a way to implement a policy to govern itself, and that is, we can pass a resolution creating a new travel policy for the council that sets out exactly the out-of-town policies the council wants to employ, or you could do it in the budget process in July. If you want to do the resolution creating the travel policy for the council, I can have that ready for the next agenda, and we can put that on. You can't do it tonight because you didn't post on your agenda tonight. What's posted on the agenda tonight is an amendment of the Personnel Policy Manual, and that only affects the employees.
You're saying that, in other words, you can make a deal for the council, but you can't make it for the city employees?
No, no, you could do either way. If, what I'm saying is, if you want to pass this item right now, tonight, it will only affect employees, it will not govern the council.
All right, I got a motion, Mayor, when you get ready.
All right, hang on just a second. Uh, you had one other question that you wanted to ask just a second ago, Mr. Allen.
He answered it for me.
Okay.
Sure, just thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, so let's hear your motion, Mr. Allen.
I'd like to make a motion to table this till May 22nd meeting, and-
Uh, May 15th. May 15th?
It would be the 15th.
May 15th, 2012, and for our city attorney to draw up a draft for the council and all departments of the city.
Well, we actually have one right here before us for, that affects the personnel. I mean, it, why would you want to postpone it?
Okay.
If you've got this portion of it here, you just, what we're talking about, Mr. Allen, just to clarify, is what we have before us affects the personnel, the employees of the city. But the city council, as it's laid out in the discussion here, you can't lay out, you can't change the language to include city council or boards and commissions under, you've got to, we've got to, we've got to strike that language. We can say it applies to all employees who travel on official city business, but that's, we'd have to make that amendment. But if that's what you want to do, we can look, we can answer this tonight.
So you're saying you could do the city employees, but you can't do the council?
Exactly, yeah.
I amend my motion.
So, so, so I'll entertain, all I'm saying is that I'd entertain a motion from you to address what we have before us, we can get it off the plate and find out whether we want to go forward with this. And then we can follow it up with a suggestion for something to go before the council on the next agenda.
Fair enough.
All right?
Okay, I have to make a motion to approve it, uh, for the city employees only.
So, so let me just read, uh, hang on. You're, you made a motion, I need a second, please. Okay, we've got a second from Mr. Perkel. Now then, into further discussion, under section 1611 as presented, authorized expenses and reimbursement, uh, I'll entertain a motion to strike, in the last sentence, strike the word "city council" and "board commission members." It would then read, "This travel policy applies to all employees who travel on official city business." Do I have your approval on that, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
All right, so we have Mr. Allen's approval. Mr. Perkel, do you approve of that amendment? This is all out-of-state travel? Okay, so Mr. Perkel is approving the amendment. Now then, what we have before us is we have a motion to approve as amended the section 1611, travel attendance at conferences, schools, et cetera. Any discussion regarding this? Mr. Parsons? You're shaking your head.
It's a lot of extra work for the manager, but that's fine.
My question is, still amendment, does it still mean that the council has to approve or disapprove?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
It's hard to do.
It is, and it's a timeliness issue, I think, on some of the part of some of the employees.
Dollars a year, it'd be worth it for the time.
First of all-
Hang on just a second. Mr. Allen, make your point, please, now that I've finished talking. Yeah, what did you say, because I didn't hear what you said.
I said, "It takes time to do what we're asking for, but if we say the taxpayers of Granberry taxes money, it's worth the time. That's what we're here for."
Right, but in response to that, I'd like to say that, as I mentioned earlier, I can't recall an issue where a city employee had to go off and make budget adjustments to accommodate their travel. They traveled within their budget.
I don't believe it's broken out in our budget, that I've seen on travel for employees.
Yes, it is. Each department has a budget item for travel, yes, sir. And that's the point I'm trying to make, is they haven't abused the system. This is in response to press regarding council, and that's why I'm wondering, do we really need it? I think we've got the checks and balances already in place to address this issue. I don't think it's been abused.
In other words, you're saying it hasn't been abused, but you're saying the council has?
No.
Why would you-
I didn't. I'm just, we're talking right now about the Personnel Policies Manual for the Granberry Personnel, the employees of the city, as addressed, and that have to adhere to the Granberry Personnel Policies Manual. I'm fully aware of the fact that we had some issues over Councilman Parsons, but what I'm trying to state is, we haven't seen an issue with the city of employee, I mean, the city of Granberry employees over the past several years.
We got a second.
We do. And we're under discussion right now, Mr. Allen, just so you know.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Hewlett, anything else you want to add to the discussion?
I just want to, one more note-
And then we'll get to it.
-the council itself and everybody, that, and the mayor brought up a good fact there, is that, for instance, if the police- for instance, if the police department had to travel out-of-state, I don't wanna be the one make that, uh, to make that call, whether they can go or not go. And if it's within their budgets, and, and they, they have it budgeted, and their manager lets them go, then that's the way it should be. I don't think the council should be telling them, and budget, after we set the budgets, whether or not we're gonna deviate from them or not. They have a budget to live by, and, and, and they can live with it.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna call for the question.
I'd like to withdraw my second.
Ah, okay. That will solve it. Except, uh, there's not a vote coming forth because you've pulled out. So, uh, we've had some discussion, uh, so we have no motion on the floor any longer. We've heard, uh, regarding this, we will, the council will take no action on this unless, uh, somebody brings forward a motion to...
Then I pull, I pull my motion on the council, then.
You don't wanna?
Nope.
Make a motion to address this during budget, then?
Nobody's interested in saving money, I'm not even...
Well, this doesn't...
It didn't save any money, Mr. Allen.
Talk about it in budget, though, Mayor.
No, it doesn't. We can always discuss it during budget. And that's when we should be discussing what the council is doing. All right, so, uh, there's nothing else regarding that. At this time, I now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session, and that , uh, all members are present except for Mitch Tyra. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with an attorney.
Hey, Mayor, can I say something?
We will be back.
Can I say something real quick?
Uh, sure.
Uh, I don't know if everybody knows it or not, but, uh, uh, Steve Berry, Commissioner, called me this afternoon, and the judge, Darryl Cochran, and said that we're not gonna be in EPA where Dallas and Fort Worth was at. Uh, we're on our own, like we've been, Ben, which will save the taxpayers a lot of money. And you see Darryl Cochran, or Joey with the EDC, or, uh, Chamber, they shipped him money, Leo over Street, thank those guys for the hard work they did. They, they went to Washington DC, they went to Dallas twice, and they've done a great job to save taxpayers thousands and thousands of dollars. And we still got a shot, I understood today, on the seventy million dollar plant that would be going into Toluhr. So, just wanted everybody to know.
Yeah, you're referring to the non-attainment issue, in other words, we, Hood County remains in the attainment area.
That's right.
Thank you.